All right, we're going to get started in just one moment. One Commissioner down. And there he is. Making his grand entrance on this lovely October 22nd. All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're gonna start with a moment of silent reflection for first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by Pastor Chris Coleman of the Lutheran Church of the Redeemer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Joe Ehrman. If everybody would please rise.
We begin our meeting this morning in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Let's pray. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here today to do the business of the county. We pray that you would bless our meeting today. We thank you for all who are here in attendance. And we pray that you would give our county commissioners wisdom as they continue to lead and guide our county and care for our residents. All these things we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
In joining the greatest country in the world, the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners. We do have one addition to the agenda. Under Administrators Matters, 11A, we'd like to add a hurricane update. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, move approval as amended.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, with that, we'll move on to Proclamations and Presentations. Our first is a presentation of proclamation honoring the 2024-2025 Indian River County Fire Rescue Lieutenant, Sergeant, Engineer, Fire Medic, and Unit of the Year. So Chief, you guys wanna come on down while I read the proclamation?
All right. It's my pleasure to read a proclamation honoring the 2024-2025 Indian River County Fire Rescue Lieutenant, Sergeant, Engineer, Fire Medic, and Unit of the Year. Whereas, on December 17th, 1923, local volunteers established the first fire department in Indian River County. And whereas, over the course of the past century, the department transitioned from volunteer to career personnel. From a department crewed solely by trained firefighters to today's crews who are dual-certified in firefighting and emergency medical response, as well as being trained in a multitude of specialized disaster response scenarios on both land and sea. And whereas, in 2021, the leadership of Indian River County Fire Rescue reinstated the longstanding tradition of annually recognizing those among their ranks who perform their duties in a manner that exemplifies a competency reflecting the highest of standards, supports fellow fire medics in achieving their goals, supports the department's policies, and regularly demonstrates the ability to lead or follow based upon the existing circumstances. And whereas, Indian River County Fire Rescue is proud to announce the award recipients for 2024-2025. Fire Medic of the Year, Chandler Leglightner, I'm sorry. Rescue Sergeant of the Year, Marcus Robinson. Engineer of the Year, Joshua Morris. Lieutenant of the Year, Brian Gaunch. Unit, Fire Prevention, Richard Marini, Alex Norat, Jennifer McKenon, Bob Burns, Jenna Turpin, Tanisha Atkins, Nicole Roth, and Rose West. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board supports the efforts of our Fire Rescue Department to publicly commend those members whose dedication, loyalty, productivity, and professionalism have been recognized by their coworkers. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners is grateful to all our Indian River County first responders and the valuable services they provide to the residents of our community. Adopted this 22nd day of October, 2024, and signed by all five county commissioners. I just wanna say congratulations before we turn it over to Chief.
It is an honor to have such consummate professionals within our county and doing the good work every day. We really appreciate everything that you guys do. Chief?
Commissioners, I just wanna thank you for taking time to recognize our best of the best, so to speak. Our men and women in uniform who are out there every day performing the duties that make sure our county is safe. Whether it's in the field or reviewing plans and inspections, they do something every day that gives creed to our motto of being out there to protect and provide for the safety and property of our citizens. They go above and beyond each and every day, showing the dedication and the excellence that we like to have as a department. And they give our name true. It's, we are the Fire Rescue Department, and they exemplify that every day. We have individual plaques we'd like to give out to each one of them and see if they wanna say something. Lieutenant Brian Gaunch.
So I thank you guys, thank you for the opportunity. Station 14B shift, I'm here because of them, so.
Rescue Sergeant Marcus Robinson. Thank you, everybody, for this honor. It's greatly appreciated.
Engineer Joshua Morris.
Thank you very much.
And for the Fire Prevention staff, I'll get Assistant Chief Rich Marini the plaque.
I wanna thank the Commission for my team for this award and all the chiefs here at the department. And I'm privileged to work with the great guys and girls of the whole Fire Rescue family, so. And during this last storm, he showed how we work as a family. It was great to see that happen, and I'm very proud to be part of his team. Thank you.
And again, thank you again for recognizing these men and women. They are our team, they're the roots of where we come from. We exemplify everything that there is to be in the Fire Rescue Department. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Well, congratulations to each and every one of you. Proud of you, proud of what you do, and carry on on the legacy that's been going on for so many years. Morris, what took you so long?
Working on it.
Gaunch?
Better late than never.
Same way. Marcus started pretty much when I left. Congratulations to you guys. And Fire Prevention, you guys are outstanding. I mean, you've been slammed over the last few years, at least since I've been a Commissioner, with everything that's going on, and you persevered through it with our appreciation and the county's appreciation. I know it's not easy, we can't make everybody happy, but y'all done an outstanding job also. But congratulations to each and every one of you, and good job, Morris.
I'd like to thank you, especially in behalf of my district, District 5. And you did, by the way, receive accolades at Coffee with the Mayor last Friday. The City Manager, Monte Falls, Chief of Police, Dave Curry, and the Mayor, John Cattuno. It could just came up in conversation, we were giving a report about the effects of the tornadoes on my district. And it was very well attended, it was probably about 100 people. And you were recognized, Chief Marini, because of the operations center that was set up at Engine Company 2, so that it was run from there. And people were very, very grateful for that. I mean, as you, well, as you know better than anyone, parts of my district were just devastated. Absolutely devastated. So your support, your hard work, your courage were especially appreciated during that storm. And that's the, you know, those are times, and I know you face emergencies every day, but that was such a widespread emergency. And so I just wanted you to know, not only today, but there are other days and other places, such as Coffee with the Mayor, that you're being publicly recognized. And thank you again.
I do apologize for this, but as y'all know, September 24th, I lost my grandchild. And Fire Rescue, man, they were out there in numbers, and they did a job. I was sitting on that little green bench over there watching you guys in action. And my family is so appreciative of the work that y'all did for us, even though we didn't get the results that we were looking for. And I'm not leaving out the Shaft Department, the city, Vero Beach Police Department, Shores, all the different counties that came out to help out. But I definitely took notice of the Fire Rescue and the job that y'all did for us. I said, now, Shamar's gonna be missed greatly, but you guys just keep doing what you're doing, and may God continue to bless you as well. Thank you.
All right, guys. And Chief, are you gonna take the official big plaque, or? Don't move the ladies too far. I mean that nicely, ladies. Thank you.
You wanna be seen.
The struggle's real. Thank you. We gotta stick together. All right. That was a wonderful way to start the meeting. And following up, wonderful, wonderful things. Commissioner Flesher, I think you have a special thing for us today?
Would you like me to introduce a man I call Maestro, the music director from Vero Beach High School? And he has brought some of his well-talented individuals to promote.
Thank you.
To give us a little sample of the Red, White, and Blue.
Thank you.
A very patriotic tradition that has happened in this county for many years, and being produced by the Vero Beach High School Band. And it is, while it is a fundraiser, it's a fundraiser. It is patriotic, and it's an experience that I'd like everyone that can to attend, not only to help the band, not only to help the community, but to really just unwind and feel as patriotic as you possibly can. Because this music is something not to be missed. And today, we're going to have a small sampling, as we did before the meeting. Mr. Sean Shrigley.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Good morning. My name is Sean Shrigley, I'm the associate band director at Vero Beach High School, along with my colleague Paige Howell. As Commissioner Flesher just said, the reason we're here is to promote our Red, White, and Blue concert that we put on each year at Vero Beach High School. So thank you, Commissioners and staff, for allowing us to be here. Just a little history on the Red, White, and Blue concert. I actually played in the first Red, White, and Blue concert along with my buddy Chris Hicks that's here 30 years ago. Our band directors, Jim and Sheila Sammons, they, we were planning to go to Washington DC to play at the Pentagon as part of the D-Day anniversary remembrance. And so they put on a concert that year as a preview concert for our community and our families. And the year after, that became known as the Red, White, and Blue concert, and we've continued that ever since then. In the early years, the Red, White, and Blue concert took place in the WIT gym at Vero Beach High School. Tickets were sold at Bill's TV on State Route 60. And because of the enormous popularity of the concert, two performances were added, and eventually a third. A reception took place afterwards for the veterans in our cafeteria, put on by our color guard each year. This year, we've moved our concert to November to coincide with Veterans Day. We know that the time with our audience has changed over the years, and we still include the music from the Big Band era, the World War I and World War II times. But we're looking this year to include, throw in a Rolling Stones piece to kinda connect with our veterans from the Vietnam War era. So we're trying to adapt as our audience is changing as well. This year, we also wanna recognize our first responders, as they have such a huge role in our country of keeping us safe and our security. So we wanna recognize all of our veterans and our first responders this year. Last year, as we prepared for this, I told the students, this is the concert that's the most important thing they do. This is not for a rating, this is not for a trophy. This is something we do to recognize our veterans and our first responders in our community. And the pride that you see in our vets when we play the anthems from the different branches of service, the reverence and respect that you see from our vets when we play the Star Spangled Banner and Taps, that's what it's all about to play for us. And there's no other thing like it. So we really appreciate the opportunity to do that. Like I said, we moved it to November this year, it's typically been in the spring. So we have two concerts, one Sunday, November 10th at 2:00 PM, and then the second one is Tuesday, November 12th at 7:00 PM at Vero Beach High School. Tickets are half-priced for veterans and first responders. So my students gave you some cards, feel free to pass those out to family members or vets that you may know. And we're definitely looking forward to that. So with that being said, we're gonna give you a little snippet, one more piece of music for you, okay?
Fabulous. That was...
We're going to see the Red, White, and Blue concert.
The dates again, Mike?
November 10th is the matinee, 2:00 PM, and November 12th is the 7 o'clock night performance.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Fantastic, thank you so much, that was awesome.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. With that, we will move on. There's no minutes for approval and no informational items. Is there anything from consent that anybody would like pulled? Anybody from the public? None?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to, oh, item 9A. I forgot to remove that at the beginning of the meeting. Sheriff Flowers did email and would like to reschedule his... Forgot who we, oh, all right, we're calling back to order. Mr. Winpey?
Yes, ma'am.
You are, you are up to discuss federal and state funding for the existing RFP for waste collection. Welcome back.
And thank you, Madam Chairman. And good morning, and members of the commission, good morning. I'd like to, uh, just wanna begin by saying this, that, uh, I call myself a beneficiary again. And when I come up here, it's not really for my benefit. It's for my children and my grandchildren's benefit, that they can have pursuit of happiness and a tree to the fruit of happiness. Because I know that one day that I'll be going through that, that you won't be seeing my faces, pretty much. So when I come and speak, I'm just here, really not for myself, but for my children and my grandchildren, that they can have an opportunity to have some of this wealth. And now I begin my presentation. I come before you today to address the county's failure to follow federal and state procurement laws regarding minority-owned and disabled veteran-owned businesses in the RFP for recycling collection services. In my previous presentation, I asked if the county would be willing to sign a documentation stating that it does not support minority-owned businesses. I received no response. That was the last time I was saying, I did ask that question, but no one responded. And you can check the tape if you want to. I'm not here today to complain about anything. I'm just here to condemn bad behavior and bad actors. Well, what is it, the government assisted destruction of the entire procurement process, violating federal and state laws, including Florida Small and Minority Procurement Act, which mandates that government agencies actively promote participation of minority-owned and disabled-owned businesses in their procurement process. And I'm gonna read this again one more time today, and I'm gonna read it again. And this is for the recycling program. All universal trash, commercial, and natural gas production collection include and RFP for recycling services. In that case, the contract policy should allow disabled veteran and minority-owned businesses to participate, not encourage, but to participate in the RFP because the county receives federal and state funds for recycling. And veterans and minority-owned businesses should receive funding from all revenue streams. And that comes again from the guidelines of, the guidelines of grant compliance in the recycle program. That's where that comes from now. Cause I almost spent a whole lot of time up in there. It is crucial to point out that grants are heavily involved in the RFP process for recycling services. For an example, the bipartisan infrastructure law provides significant funding for recycling initiatives. A number is a solid waste infrastructure for a recycling grant program, which offer investment to purchase new fleets of recycle collection vehicles and bins to expand curb side recycling service to communities like and access. Question, you don't have to answer, you don't want to. Uh, if this grant be used toward waste management, and this grant been used toward waste management for as producing, I would say, vehicles or anything like that sort? I'm sure it's not, I'm just asking a question. Is it? Okay, no one, no response. Madam Clerk, please make that, no response.
I'm sorry, we don't, what is?
I'm asking a question. Are there any grant money? I know it's not, but I'm asking a question, I believe it's not. Are there any grant money being used for the help of waste management persons of any vehicle or anything like that? I know it's not, but I'm just asking a question. But it's not right. Okay. Madam Clerk, please make, no response.
I wouldn't say no response. I think it's unfair of Mr. Winpey to say no response.
No response means that no one's up here is saying, if I ask the question, no one is saying anything.
We typically don't answer questions in this part of the meeting, so proceed, thank you.
Okay. You say, repeat that again, please?
We typically don't have dialogue where we answer questions during public discussion.
Okay. Fine. It's, excuse me. Okay, I'm moving on. These investments authorized such acts such as the Save Our Seas 2.0 Act are intended to improve recycling infrastructure and promote economic opportunity. Federal and state funding tied to the RFP demands participation by minority-owned and disabled veteran-owned businesses. When public funding is involved, complying with these laws is not often, but illegal obligation, including the recycle collection process in the RFP and the internal agreement that all revenues become available for minority and disabled veteran-owned businesses. There are no way around this, except the county deliberately refuse to apply the necessary legal standards to the RFP. Such acts is not only is unethical, but illegal. And the county has since 1924... And the county has sensed nineteen ninety-two that you have to get it right, but you haven't. The issue is not new. The county's flawed procurement process has been ongoing since nineteen ninety-two. Let's talk about the interlocal agreement formulated that year. The county negotiated with two halls simultaneously, which should have been bided out, but it didn't, it was later on. Still at receiving the procurement, I found no meetings, minutes of meetings associated with the agreement's original intent stating why just those two halls has this opportunity or anything associated with the interlocal agreement. Any county meeting without official minutes can be challenged as invalid, and the deal can be contested. There are three criteria that I would like to discuss with the interlocal agreement. That must be addressed immediately so that I can thoroughly understand its validity. One, the interlocal agreement must have minutes to be valid. Number two, when legal entity approve this interlocal agreement, I see a court stamp date by the local court, but I do not see approval by Department of Legal Affairs. Our part of the local courthouse handles judiciary side, and the Department of Legal Affairs handle legal representation and protection. They review state laws and regulations. Number three, the interlocal agreement must include a language ensuring the participation of minority-owned and disabled-owned business. Without this, the document is legally flawed and invalid. The county's failure to include these provisions to both the interlocal agreement and the RFP blatantly violates procurement laws. Federal and state funding in the RFP, such that provided by the bipartisan infrastructure law and the solid waste infrastructure for recycling grant program means the county is legally obligated to ensure that minority-owned and disabled-owned veteran businesses have access to all associated revenue streams. By failing to do so, the county is breaking the law and denying fair opportunity for companies that is entitled to participate. I'll take my seat when I say this. Truth should always bring on justice. Truth should always lead to justice conclusion. Thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Are there any questions? And I'll, if I take my seat again, if I take my seat, I say this. I know sometimes that when I come here and speak, that it appears to me that nothing get done. That I come before you and speak, and to me, you think just I come before you just to speak, but I don't. I don't come up and waste my energy and time just to speak to you. I come here looking for some type of action to these issues that has been brought before this commission. Now, I say this again, you can sit here on the dais of the palace and don't do nothing, just think I come here blowing smoke, that I'm not here to threaten no one at all. But I do know this, that hey, I'm not coming up here just to be blowing smoke. I don't come up here and waste my time and energy researching this stuff over and over and over and over again for nothing to happen. I'm not gonna do that. I come here for action. I come here for some type of action to be taken or some type of consideration to be taken. But I'm not gonna be coming up here wasting my time and you do nothing, just take me as though, well, it's only be a rigby, and I'm not gonna do anything. I'm not gonna do that. But I will come here and come and come to justice be served and justice be done. Because I'm not, I'm over here. I am. I'm in my seventies. And I'm not, I'm, I'm coming here for my children and my grandchildren, that they can have a pursuit of happiness in this county. My child shouldn't have to go to Nevada, North Carolina, Georgia to get a job, or even get something down here. They shouldn't have to. They should have a piece of this pie. Like everybody says, if they wanna come in and be a waste, do some waste office, they should. If they wanna come here and do whatever, do some AC work, they should. You guys sound like this out there, that we could, that license contractor, we have license contractors, that can do that work. Give us some of that work.
Mr. Rigby. Last time you were here, you asked for information, and you were asked to go to the, because you were making a public records request, to go to the attorney's office so it could be logged into the system and we could provide the information that you keep coming and asking for. Did you do that?
No, she just got with me this afternoon, just let me just go. But I'm gonna-
So, okay, but the one thing I wanna say is the continued allegations that we're doing something illegal is inaccurate and false, and you have been provided with that information and those answers. And I appreciate that perhaps you feel like you're not being heard in the process, and I get what you're trying to say, but we are not doing anything illegal, and we are not doing anything unsavory or underhanded. And all the things that you point out as far as people having access to the process, they do have access to the process. Whether they choose to avail themselves of being a part of that process is a different story. And I think that there is a misunderstanding of what the process is. But I can tell you, you can read state law, and you can read federal law, and you can read code and all those things. And if you are not going to the attorney's office or the procurement office to find out how it is applied, then you are reading those things in a vacuum, and it is creating misinformation for the public. So I appreciate, and you're always welcome to come here, I appreciate when you do come and what you have to say. But I feel like these questions have been asked and answered numerous times, but perhaps they're not being answered the way you would like them, and that's what's causing this constant distress.
Madam Chair, personally, I appreciate the terms that you have just said to me. And I'm gonna say this again, I'll take my seat. I've been in procurement for almost fourteen, twenty years. I understand procurement totally. But when I go and get this, and then I follow your rules and your regulation according to the recyclers, recyclable program that you have, I don't understand why you tell me that I'm in flawed programs or whatever, because this is the guideline for that, for recycling program. This come down from the state and federal law, hand it down to the local government, and it says this, if you wanna get federal dollars, you must follow federal and state laws for procurement. It's, and all get those grants.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Rigby. Always a pleasure to see you. All right.
Madam Chair, thanks for, for letting me back. I did say, how much you? Can I just, it's enough to believe in this at all, however, it should be noted that Mr. Rigby, in years past, I don't think any of you were here at the time, but he was part of the procurement process, and he was an applicant, and there were many. I just wanted to call how much you, because see, there's people watching, and after hearing that, it was not accurate. I just wanna ask one question. Have we ever, ever engaged without applying the procurement process and which is open to all who are qualified and are being able to perform the function?
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, how much you met the Managing Director of the Solid Waste Disposal District. Commissioner, no, we've, we've not excluded anybody. If somebody is qualified, our process does not exclude anyone. And Capitol sanitation in the past served the city of Sebastian.
Yes.
They've had opportunities to participate in our procurement process. We have records of them coming to our, you know, meetings and being a bid holder, but we never received, you know, response, a qualified response that we've selected. Just quickly, Indian River County has not applied for or received any federal or state grants that were just mentioned. So just for the record, you know, we do not have any such grants.
Both accounts were addressed. That was the next question. Thank you. I just wanted the public to hear that after they heard what they heard as we gave Mr. Rigby the opportunity to speak. An opportunity to speak is one that is open to every member of the public. However, as Commissioner Law pointed out, we were not going to engage in something more specifically if it's inaccurate information. I just wanted to clarify it because people are watching.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, with that, we'll move on to County Administrators Matters, eleven A, Hurricane Update.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I wanted to thank for the opportunity to provide this update. First and foremost, I want to extend our continued heart, our prayers and thoughts to the community, especially those impacted by Hurricane Milton. The county and our partners will continue to work tirelessly till we recover. I certainly want to acknowledge all of our staff, and I do mean all, because they all played a role. And to include, I appreciate the county attorney's office for their assistance as we've kind of navigating through these early stages of recovery. And we've been proceeding that with the state of emergency, the local declaration. And then I wanna be remiss not to thank each of you for your time and attention in terms of our update calls, as well as filling me in if there's any issues that are present that maybe your staff's not aware of, and somebody called you. We appreciate that because it certainly, it's a team effort to respond to a community disaster like this. And so with that, I just want to recap a little bit of what happened and where we are. And also share some information, I know it's probably important to some people that wanna know. As we know, Monday, Monday morning, actually, the weekend before, Ryan, Mike Zito, Dave Johnson himself were monitoring the storm, you know, what was gonna come out. But on Monday morning at eight AM on the October seventh, the EOC did activate to level two. And then we upgraded to level one the next day at 2:00 PM, largely so we could implement sheltering plans because of the potential path for the hurricane. The level one activation continued until the post-storm, which was Friday, eleven, Friday, the eleventh at 3:00 PM, when the sheltering operations ceased. Our EOC was staffed with emergency, emergency information line, which was staffed by employees that did not work for emergency management, they worked from other departments. So we appreciate that collaboration and everybody coming together. They handled twelve hundred and ten calls during the time that they were there. That line is still open for those members of the public that may have something they wanna ask or something they wanna report at seven seven two, two two six, four thousand. Seven seven two, two two six, four thousand. You know, we opened shelters, we sheltered a total of about four hundred and twenty families, twenty, number of animals, and then we also had forty-five in our special needs shelter. Our fire rescue, they continued to respond to calls, lower eight hundred and eleven, of which about a hundred and seventy-six were related to the storm in terms of wires, water, or damage. They obviously, as soon as they had the first opportunity, they, along with many other agencies, sheriff's office, the city of Rio Beach, responded to the beachside to help the, where the tornado, the EF3 had done most, a lot of the damage. In terms of damages, we, as of the most recent update, we're still at about fifty, just over fifty-nine million dollars, forty-three point six, which is residential. We did have fifty-one homes destroyed, and we have ninety-one that were damaged, but we have categorized as major. There was a total of seven ninety-four residential structures that had incurred some form of damage. Commercially, we fifteen point three billion, we had three businesses completely destroyed, and twenty-six was major damage. Public community damages in terms of roads and bridges, water control facilities, public buildings, equipment. We fared well for our county facilities generally, but we still did experience and incur at this moment about seven point three million dollars of damage. So that's just kind of brief overview there. I just wanna kind of touch on FEMA has opened, as you know, and so the public is aware, the Disaster Recovery Center, they did, they opened a soft opening at one o'clock on Saturday. I want to thank Parks and Rec and others who participated made that happen. And they rolled in real quick. Once they got there, they rolled in real quick, with the logistics, have the team, small business administration, other agencies there, FDEM, Florida Department of City Management was there. So we have other state and federal agencies at the IG, and they are open every day, eight AM until seven VM, until further notice. And that's again at the fifteen ninety Ninth Street Southwest. I would be remiss not to, the other thing is to acknowledge United Way, United Against, uh, excuse me, United Against Poverty Center came together with other agencies and stood up a mark, or a multi-agency resource center. And one week that they did that, they served over seventeen hundred and fifty households in providing assistance. And we had eight representatives, if I recall correctly, from FEMA that were there to help with disaster assistance as well. And our staff also augmented and helped make that, that center a reality because besides the agencies manning their tables and their booths, there was a need for some operational assistance, and we certainly appreciate all the staff members from departments, from planning, development, utilities, we had commissioner assistants that helped out. It was just wide, community services, it was widespread, and we appreciate that because it really was a big community effort. And so we wanna thank, you know, the United Way and the United Against Poverty. I do, would like to announce the FEMA Disaster Survivor Assistance Team, that was at Gifford Youth Achievement Center, that that location closed last night. But the, thank you to the Senior Resource Association, because they are gonna be providing free transportation from the Gifford Youth Achievement Center to the IG Center for disaster assistance. And they, FEMA is going to be deploying canvassing in the neighborhoods, you know, up into the various areas to make sure that we cover everybody. And if somebody, I would like to say, if somebody believes or that they are aware they have damage and they're not certain it was assessed, or that we're not aware of it, they should give us a call, again, at seven seven two, four two six, four thousand. We will dispatch our building official or our building staff to do the assessment of that, so make sure we can mark it down. I wanna encourage everybody, if you have incurred damage, to file an insurance claim with your carrier. Start that process. Get your documents and start that process. And then also, you're gonna, we want you to apply for FEMA assistance. You can get the assistance directly at the Disaster Recovery Center, the IG Center, or you can go online at disasterassistance.gov. You could use FEMA's app, they have one. Or you could call FEMA at eight hundred, six two one, three three six two. If you have issues with your roof and there's tarps, please don't pay for anything. I would call the Operation Blue Roof, which is being put on by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And it's twenty-one days, and it ends on November fifth, so if you, if you need tarps for your roof, you know, please contact www.blueroof.gov, or call eight eight eight, roof blue, or eight eight eight, seven six six, three two five eight, and you can get your roof covered. And we've had several people that have taken advantage of that, rather reliant on when they show up. I know a big issue out there right now, and then I'll go into some updates briefly, is what are we doing with the debris? Our debris contractor started yesterday. The management company came in, they did an assessment, you know, prior to them starting yesterday, the pickup contractor establishing zones, as well as kind of get an estimation of where we are in debris. So what we wanna make sure we realize is that Sirius Environmental Services, they started yesterday, they started in the South Cali, in the Highlands area. And if you are a waste management subscriber or customer, you may continue to follow normal protocols for your trash pickup. Disaster debris is handled on a, that special agreement through, that we have in advance with Sirius Environmental for the purpose of clearing debris. So what do we need to know? What we really need to know is that we need everybody to separate their debris categories and place them, you know, right outside the right way, don't place it in the right way, meaning like in the right way to block it. But you should have one pile that's vegetative, with leaves, mulch, plants, logs, et cetera. Building materials, metals, bricks, you know, shingles, kind of like construction debris. And then other types of like, you know, furniture, other materials like mattresses, drywall, pressure treated wood, anything like that. You have those three piles that will facilitate the collection of the debris in a more orderly manner. One of the things that we are, for everybody, follow your normal collection schedule for household trash. But we are asking for people that are doing debris, do not place it in a bag. And I'm gonna go back home later today and take- a bag, and I'm going to go back home later today and take mine out of the bag, or in a can. You need to just set it out on the side of your property line and let that get picked up. A claw truck is being used, that's why, they're not going to be, it'll slow the process down, and everybody wants to get rid of debris, but it'll slow the process down, so they are not stopping to empty cans or bags as it relates to debris. So just place it in a pile, it's one of those three piles, right outside on your, on your property line, not in the right way though, in the right way. So no bags, no bags, no cans. I will add, you know, the county did waive the fees at the landfill for the first ten days for, you know, for everybody, to try and get, gave two weekends to get, you know, get stuff in. We know that there's long lines there, we're hoping that over time that they will, they will kind of get, become more expeditious. But right now, the commercial tipping fee at landfill is ten dollars and thirty cents, and then for residential, it's free. We do estimate that it's going to be four to six weeks is the early time, that's when we believe that we're going to be able to get this done. And I know if you've got debris out there, like many of us, you know, you're probably retired looking at it. They started yesterday, we had to follow a process because this is something that's subject to FEMA reimbursement, but please be patient, we understand, it's challenging, it's difficult, but we are doing everything we can to, you know, get out there and pick up and collect debris. I saw people working, in waste management, working on Saturday, you know, collecting debris in this, you know, on Twenty-seventh, Twenty-seventh and also on Twentieth Avenue. I've heard they're collecting it in Sebastian, the city's working on it and the county's working on it. We're doing our level best to try to get this debris collected in the most expeditious and efficient manner as possible, but at the same time, it is going to take time. And so we, what, five hundred and forty, five hundred and twenty, five hundred and forty square miles, and there is a lot of debris. We had a total of eight hurricane, or excuse me, eight tornadoes that preceded the actual arrival of Hurricane Milton, an EF3, which was, in my lifetime, I don't know about anybody else, but I've never seen that type of tornadic activity. And when they say it's unprecedented, and not, my first hurricane was nineteen seventy-nine, Hurricane David, that I can remember as a child, and I've never seen that type of tornadic activity. So we appreciate everybody, we understand everybody's still dealing with the impacts, but we are working hard, our solid waste division, our debris contractor, our public works folks are working hard to respond and get rid of this debris, as well as other issues. I would like to share with the board and members of the public, we had over forty staff members after that storm hit, come out within hours and start damage assessment activities through, on zones throughout the entire county. We also had representatives, Paige from a GIS helping to lead that way in terms of the leadership of Scott McAdam and Erica and Candace, but the sort of point is, it was a team effort, people from building, people from unlicensed contractors, no, they weren't out there trying to ticket people, like I saw that on Facebook, or on, maybe it was Nextdoor app that, wow, they're out there trying to ticket, or give people a violation. No, they were out there trying to help and help us get further along in that recovery process by understanding the damage assessment. Again, I want to note, if the dam, if you have damage and you're not certain it's been assessed, because maybe it was in the back of the yard, or maybe it was in the side that maybe we couldn't see, call us at seven seven two four two six four thousand, and we'll make sure that we get, you know, get somebody out there. And it's important to get that documented, and I would also like to add that we are waiving permit fees related to damage related, you know, to repair damages caused by the tornadoes or, and or the hurricane. And we also worked to expedite that permitting on your end as well. And that, those efforts also involve planning and development services. So from a utility standpoint, you know, we have about approximately three hundred and forty-eight lift stations, and only about twenty-two percent, we still lost, about seventy-eight. At one point, we didn't have power, and we were rotating our staffs or our crews, they did a phenomenal job. We didn't really have any major issues with our wastewater and water treatment plant. We did have, fortunately, we did have a spill at one of our repump stations at the North Wastewater Treatment Facility. We do estimate a spill of about thirty-two thousand five hundred gallons, but it was all contained in one of our rapid infiltration bases that are joined the site, so we're kind of, we're very fortunate in that sense. Obviously, from a, the power standpoint, that affected everybody, it affected us as well, specifically our traffic operations. We have like about a hundred and sixty-seven signals that we manage. We did have to coordinate with FDOT to work with them to get the traffic signals up so we could safely, so residents could safely traverse our roads. We had a hundred and forty-one that didn't have any damage, so we really were down to like that twenty, the twenty-six that did. And then we, they had to deploy stop signs to get them out there, and we had to work with FDOT as well, and we know there was damage related to some of the curvational crossings, so we appreciate everybody, you know, taking heed to the, to the warnings and the encouragement by the sheriff and our other ABM staff during our press briefings to be, to be careful and just be, to be neighborly. We thank Roman Bridge, obviously, we still have a significant issue with County Route five twelve. If you recall, going back to Hurricane, I think it was Ian, the state was able to repair, or they could temporarily fix from mainland to San Antonio Island in one week. So we're kind of calling it Project San Antonio for what we call for the category five twelve. St. John's River Water Management District, they're working with us, they're, you know, auditing the team, and we're going to get conceptual plans. St. John's is going to provide us the emergency authorization or exemption, we're going to get that repaired in, in a very short timeframe, we're estimating two, three weeks still, just two, three weeks, so we are working to get that done. Just ongoing repairs, we did some graders that went down, I think everybody's aware of that, and we still have some work orders still out there, basically, we're prioritizing them, the public works department, there was eight hundred and eighty-three requests, and we still have just done over about a hundred and thirty or so that are still open that they are working on. I already mentioned our facilities, our county facilities generally fared pretty well, other than having to do debris pickup in our park, but our parking lots. We have the EOC, the sheriff's office, we did have respond to air conditioning issues. And then, obviously, we all know that there was localized flooding issues, six to ten inches of rain during that two-hour period during tornadoes really impacted, I heard the other day that, that it's, the canal system's design, I think it was two point three inches per hour, and so when you get six to ten inches of rain, that really impacts the ability, and it's my understanding that they did have, the question is, why did they open the gates? The gates were open, they, the locks were open. So just want to point that out, but our public work staff has done a good job out there trying to continue. Just want to note on the parks and recreation side, we, you know, all our facilities, parks and conservation areas are open, with the exception, we have Tracking Station Beach Park, Sebastian Canoe Arms, Jose Schuman Park, Vera Highlands Green Space, the Hallstrom Farm State Conservation Area, the Oslo Riverfront Conservation Area, and the Pelican Island National Wildlife Refuge is closed until the US, you know, the US Fish and Wildlife Service cannot get out there to open it themselves. So, and then just know at the IG Center, if you're going to go there, we still are doing multi, the West Wing is the FEMA Disaster Center, but we still are doing our intergenerational programming on the other meeting rooms, and also on the gym court and stuff like that, so that still exists, so just know it's going to be, can be pretty packed there, we have comfort stations out, and that's one of them. In terms of, and two more things that are after this, our beaches, we had significant dune retreat and lower our beach profiles, mainly in Sector Three, where our dunes remain intact, but we have experienced, and still are experiencing beach erosion, and our natural resources, you know, they're monitoring it, so we can document it and do what we have to do in the aftermath. Lastly, I really want to thank and highlight, and I know there's always opportunities or room for improvement, but you know, we operate in a digital age, and I just want to share some of the operates that was done in addition to the, the daily calls, you know, that Ryan, our emergency management chief, held with Bob Seuss, that were heard during the morning, at eight, eight something in the morning, and then at six o'clock at night. We also held daily one thirty PM press conferences to kind of update and keep the public informed. But one of the main vehicles that we used through the sheriff's office, through just even our partners, they would disseminate whatever we put out there, but just on looking at our own site, I asked, and our IT folks were able to get us some information as it relates to what happened, you know, in terms of our communications and our stuff. We saw a hundred and fifty-one thousand views between October sixth and ninth on our website. In our Facebook, we had an increase of over seven hundred percent, like a hundred and twenty-three point one thousand engagements on our website, another thirty-five thousand engagements, or a two hundred and fifty-eight percent increase on the emergency services Facebook page. We also use Instagram, we saw pretty significant increases, again, in the hundred percentiles. Indian River County's Instagram, in addition, we reached six point one thousand people, and the emergency services were just under a thousand. Nextdoor app, we had sixty-one thousand post views, so every time we posted on Nextdoor app, it got, it was out there, and then we also, if you recall, we have the Everbridge and Where and Prepare, they were posting items there, and people saw it, and then one thing I'll just mention, is I saw constantly the same things that would be posted on Nextdoor, being posted on those that have the Ring cameras, they have the alert network as well, and they were posting that. That's just a kind of a brief, well, maybe it's not brief for someone, I apologize, I went too long, but I, I think what it talks about is, you know, when we talk about one of our core values being united in our purpose to serve the community, well, that happened during the storm, I think the leadership of the emergency management team and all of our partners at the EOC is greatly appreciated, and they provided what we needed, and we will continue to work to help our community recover. And if you, again, if they have any questions, you can go down to the IG for the Disaster Recovery Center, or you can call us at seven two seven four two six four thousand, or seven two seven two two six four thousand, sorry about that. And we will certainly assist you, and again, I want to thank the board for the opportunity to present this today, but it's really on behalf of all the people, the staff, and our partners that did all that work out there, and we do appreciate that.
Wonderful, commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, John, you mentioned the seven point three billion that damaged to county properties, can you be a little more specific on which properties?
Yeah, can I just provide the list to each of you today? Because there's some, like, I know the road at County Route five twelve, that's about five hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The water treatment or control facilities was about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, but the ones that I probably need to get some breakdown on are the public buildings and equipment, about two point four billion. And then as it relates to parks and recreation facilities, and I believe this includes the beaches, but it's at three point five billion dollars. I'd get you a further breakdown of that.
And I'm sure you're constantly working on the after action report, which we could probably expect in maybe December.
Yeah, I think we're going to circle back with Ryan and Chief Johnson to do that. We've been asking all the department heads to, you know, to make sure they adopt, I mean, TAVPA specifically, for the purposes of doing that, yes, because that's a great opportunity to not just to evaluate, it's a better opportunity to evaluate what we can do better in the next time, not so much what we did wrong, what we can do better to improve our response and our recovery operations.
And then just for the public, know that the county is not in charge of Xfinity, because we have.
That's a good one, yes, sir.
It's one thing, and we're not in control of Xfinity, so I appreciate all the social media, but sometimes when they don't have, they can't receive, so thank you.
I agree with you on the social media thing, for sure, it gets out of control with some misinformation and stuff like that, and I'll touch on that for just, just a second. But one thing I do want to add is that I spoke with David Gunner on Thursday at Indian River Farms Water Control District, and of course, on social media, you heard, yeah, the locks whenever are open, all that sort of stuff. I got phone calls that, that, well, my yard hasn't flooded in forty years, and now it's all of a sudden decided to flood. I can tell you that the locks for the Indian River Farms Water Control District, every one of them were open on Friday morning before the Wednesday storm. They were open, so that's what, four or five days before, before the storm. There had been, you know, previous rains, a lot of groundwater, but they were open. He said five days of the Friday before the storm on Wednesday, right, so he said four days. And his canals, like, like County Administrator said, the Indian River Farms Water Control District canals are rated at handling two point three to two point five inches of rain per hour pretty comfortably. After that, you know, it becomes, it becomes, it becomes an issue, because I got calls, again, that, you know, neighborhoods out by where I live were flooded, I mean, my road flooded, I live on a lake that ends up dumping into the canal system, and I had bass and tilapia and bluegills swimming in my yard, so that it went down by morning time. But I would tell you that any, any criticism of Indian River Farms Water Control District is unjust because, you know, that guy has done more hurricanes than most of us in his lifetime, and he knows exactly what's, what's taking place with that. These canals were flat full, I mean, they, we received in my house, I received almost ten inches of rain in two hours, and so that's unheard of, very much so. And the canals running out to the Eighth Street Canal, which runs to the Fifty-Eighth Avenue Canal to the Main Canal, they were max capacity. And they did everything, everything possible that they could do, but I just wanted to make, let everybody know that the locks were open Friday before the Wednesday storm with regards to that, with regards to any flooding that you had. The other things I've been getting, and maybe as County Administrator may ask you about this, is was that, you know, we received calls of people wondering, why isn't the landfill free? And I said, well, for your, the questions that I answered, it's always been free if you have vegetated debris. And then just recently, we started a ten dollar and thirty cent charge for commercial land, they, well, they were, I've had some of them complain about that too. But, you know, we have a, we have an operation running there, and a business to run, but my only question maybe if I may ask you about this is how are we? I heard there was a long wait at the landfill, obviously there is, so if you have these, these landscapers that are paying, they're stopping to pay, is that slowing up the operation with regards to everything that's going on out there in the landfill?
Good morning, commissioners, again, for the record, I'm Asher, I'm the managing director of Solid Waste Disposal District. So it was just the timing, if you will, we did, as of October one, as board approved, we did a three percent increase on all our tipping fees, and as of October one, we did initiate a vehicle waste service charge for commercial landscapers that bring in small yard waste debris. Typically, they, there is no charge for the material they bring, it's free, but we did start instituting this ten dollar thirty cents charge, and then the hurricane happened, and as the county administrator mentioned, we waived all, all of those fees for about ten days for yard waste and commercial construction materials. We have, as of one day yesterday, we have restarted our fees, there were lines yesterday. Late in the afternoon, basically, I was out there with help with Republic Services, we closed down our inbound lane and basically used both lanes to get everybody out as quickly as we could. This, as of this morning, what I've instituted is, we're collecting that ten dollars and thirty cents on the way in, so when a, when a, when a commercial customer identifies that they have small yard debris, we're collecting the ten thirty right there and then. That way, they're not having to wait on the way out to pay that fee. So it's a way, and for what I, right before this meeting, I found out that we have about three people on the inbound and about three people on the outbound. So as of this morning, the lines are under control. I mean, we do have a lot of material that private, you know, landscapers are picking up, and they're assisting our community, which is great, and so we do have that increase in traffic. However, I think, you know, this, this fee is, we're looking for ways to how to speed things up, and I think the plan we have now, where we collect the fee on the way in, is going to help kind of reduce the traffic jam at our facility.
Can y'all explain the debris situation with the municipalities and how you're handling that, and what we are doing for, if just somebody wants to bring in their own construction debris, they're not a commercial holler or anything like that, all of that particular portion of it?
If I can understand the question, or I'll state it this way, we, our facility's open seven days a week, seven AM to five PM, it's open to the public, so any, any private contractor that wants to bring in construction materials, yard waste debris, our facility's open. What we have done is, when we're looking at, you know, the eight tornadoes and some of the major damages that has occurred throughout the county, we've been in contact with the city of River Beach related to that construction, what we call class three waste, so it's construction materials, household waste, and they estimate about five thousand tons of material that they have, that they want to bring to our facility. And so And so the discussions I've had is encouraging them to look for alternative locations for, for that material. The, the reason being is we are at limited capacity at the landfill. About five thousand tons is about a month of, of material that we get on a typical basis. And so although we have a new ten acre cell that's close to being ready, it's not quite ready yet, and this influx, one month of capacity that would be depleted, is something that I'm trying to reserve for our regular customers, regular, you know, day-to-day trash. So it is some discussions we're having with the city of River Beach and, and even our contractors, series. If they're picking up a lot of construction materials, we're also encouraging them not to use the landfill, to, to use, there's a private facility across the street, Open Chobe Landfill is also available to accept material. So we're just trying to kind of watch our capacity and make sure that as we continue to kind of, you know, move forward, that we always maintain capacity for our day-to-day garbage.
So it doesn't change a thing? Hall owner brings in their vegetated debris, they charge, they bring in construction debris or furniture or something like that, there is that construction debris charge, nothing changes for that?
That's correct. So all, if, if it's a chargeable item that they bring in, there's a, there's a charge for that, whether it's residential or commercials. If you bring in construction materials, that is a chargeable item, you cannot bring that to the convenience center, it must go to the landfill. And so there's, there's a, a, you know, a charge for that, for construction materials. We do have that ten thirty as a minimum, so even if you brought in one ton, you know, if you brought in four, five hundred pounds, we still charge that ten dollars and thirty cents for, for construction materials. But it's typically by weight, so whatever the, the weight that they leave us is, is kind of what we assess the charge for, based on our tipping rates.
I mean, I honestly don't know what the problem is, but I guess we need to make sure that we let everybody know via the social media what the operation at landfill, that basically nothing's changed, but it's clear as to, as to what we're charging for, what we're not.
Sure, sure.
If we do whatever. Thanks for, for, for your efforts and what y'all done. I know it's never easy after a hurricane or a disaster like this to, to, you know, everybody wants their stuff out of the way as soon, as soon as they can and taken care of it.
We usually start advertising in June, beginning of the hurricane season, to, to have folks start cleaning things up, start trimming their trees and so on and so forth, but, but yeah, we've been through this before, usually folks bring in a few, you know, right two days before the storm and then many days after they continue to bring all their stuff, so. But we're open, we're open for business.
Okay. Madam Chairman, on the other thing, the beach and shore made yesterday, we had a mandate from Natural Resources, they're going to go back out on Thursday and, and reassess again. The, the beaches did take a hit, Wabesa Beach seems to be the one to take a hit, but overall, we, we did fairly well. The sand sector four is going to start, as scheduled, which will be working on Indian River Farms for sector four. Overall, there's, I mean, there's some repairs that need to be done, some things that need to happen, but it's not, it's not like, you know, I say it's thank goodness this is going to be in the company east, it might have been a different story.
For sure.
That's all.
All right. I just want to thank all of our, all of our employees, the, not only the ones in the EOC, but the ones that were out in the field. I think a lot of times, you know, we see the first responders and they did a fantastic job, most definitely, but we don't see our public works guys and our utilities guys that are, they are making sure our infrastructure is safe and making sure people can get out and get around and, and access and, you know, unlike some of our neighbors, our utility system did a fantastic job. We didn't have really any discharges at all. I can't say the same for some of our neighbors, so kudos to your guys, Sean and Adi Rodenbridge, those guys I know they worked like five, six, seven days straight over the weekend, long hours, clearing roads, grading them, getting everybody back in. So I really want to thank the boots on the ground that were out there doing the work to make sure our community was safe. The only thing I would add, and I think, you know, Commissioner Gore and Commissioner Ehrman both touched on it, but social media is a fantastic thing, it's a great tool, but for the residents that are getting their information from their neighbors on social media versus the official channels on social media, or going to the website where that information is, I would just encourage the community to please make sure you're seeking the information from the source, not perhaps from your neighbor that moved here three years ago, who was great and they have a lot of great information about what's going on in your neighborhood, but, but perhaps not the exact information about how to get rid of debris or where to find FEMA assistance and that type of thing. So our website has all that information, our social media pages have those, that information, the municipality's social media pages. So please make sure that you are going there for that information and, and for some of the neighborhood pages that are run by people in our community, I really appreciate them helping to share our messages and amplify the proper information, because one of, one of the things that's very difficult to combat in emergency situations or disaster situations is the misinformation. So we do appreciate our community partners helping to share the proper information so people know where to go. But all in all, you know, it could have been much worse. I'm very thankful that it, it turned out to be what it was and not what it could have been. We're very blessed and I appreciate everybody that helped us get through it. It's never easy to get through these things and, and as much as you prepare and you go through trainings and you go through scenarios, when you're in it, it's just, there's always anomalies that pop up and you kind of have to roll with it. So I appreciate everybody that did that, I know it's, it's stressful and, you know, we'll, we'll get to where we need to be, but it'll be a little bit to, to get all this stuff processed and moving forward, so thank you everybody for your hard work. John, anything else you want to add to that?
No ma'am, I just want to thank the board and again, I want to thank all of our employees as well as our partners that came together and response.
Most definitely. All right, with that, we will move on to utility services, twelve J one, utility accounts, receivable bad debt write-offs and foreclosure activity. Thank you.
Good morning Commissioners, Sean Mieske, Director of Department of Utility Services. I first want to start by saying thank you all for, for what you all do and John, great summary of everything that transpired during and following the storm. I, you know, I agree, I think there's a lot of unsung heroes out there that did a lot of work to protect our community. One, one thing I did want to clarify for debris management collection, our contractor is picking up private HOAs in gated communities, but only if we have an access agreement, signed access agreement. So if you're in an HOA or you're in a private community on a private road, get on our website, please, and fill out that access, access agreement, or we will not be able to pick up that debris from your area. So that's critical for all those who are on private roads.
And, and just to follow up on what Sean said, that information is on our website under our Storm Center Resources link, click on that and it's right there on that front page.
With that, back to the, the item at the hand, you know, we, we have a lot of past due accounts that we, you know, are working with to try to get payment and oftentimes those end up going perhaps for, to foreclosure. We do have an ordinance that allows us to reach agreement in lieu of foreclosure and I know Brian's going to talk a little bit about that. I'm just going to take a minute to introduce Brian Beavers, who was our finance director, and he's going to take it from here, been talking a little bit about kind of bad debts and where we are this year.
Good morning, I'm Brian Beavers, the Utilities Finance Manager, and we're here today to request approval to write off as bad debt, some amounts related to some settlement agreements that have been completed on our past due accounts receivables. Oh wow, we have slides, that's wonderful. Okay. Do you see this on your screens?
Seven to.
Yes, perfect, okay. So this morning, we're, we're here to talk about, first of all, ten settlement agreements that we have signed over the last fiscal year FY twenty-four, which ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Of those ten settlement agreements totaling six hundred and eighteen thousand, we have completed seven. Completed means that the already have completed all the payments required to finish their settlement agreement. The seven completed settlement agreements were for a total of four hundred thirty-seven thousand, of which the customer paid two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of payments, and we're here today to request write-off of a hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and three cents related to those seven completed agreements. We also had three additional agreements that were signed in FY twenty-four, they are still underway, the customer is making payments towards those. Those three agreements totaled a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We're expected to receive forty-seven thousand dollars worth of payments from the customer for those three agreements and we're projecting a write-off amount of a hundred and thirty-four thousand and nine dollars. I will note that as we continue down this road of doing settlement agreements, we're seeing a shift of the amount of write-off that we're going to have to do and it's primarily because, or we feel like it's because the difficulty is growing on the circumstances related to, to the past due amount, and it's just requiring additional monies to be written off to be able to reach an agreement. Oops, I skipped too many. So we have also during the year completed two foreclosure sales, which is new for us this year in utilities. The first one was a, a foreclosure sale that was sold third-party, which means that a, a third-party buyer bought the property and so the county did not end up with that property. We were able to recover all of our bad debt amounts plus attorney fees, et cetera. So the actual debt that we are able to recover for that particular foreclosure sale was three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, there's no write-off related to that. We had a second foreclosure sale that was completed in FY twenty-four. On that one, the, there was a different department that actually foreclosed upon the property and utilities had an outstanding balance for it. For that one, we were required to, well, let me back up, there was no bidder for that particular property, so the county acquired the property and as a result of that, we received no proceeds towards the utility bill. So we had to write off both service charges of nine thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars plus penalties and interest, twenty-eight thousand and nine dollars. We brought that particular one to the, to your board in August, so that one has been Then I wanted to just take a minute to highlight kind of the, the trend of what we're seeing going forward by looking at our account, accounts receivable balances that are more than a hundred and twenty days past due, and this is a trend. Right now, we have one point seven million dollars of one twenty-plus days past due receivable balances. In twenty twenty, that number was three point seven million, so we are bringing the number down. It is a slow process. Of the one point seven million dollars, we have twenty-one accounts that we have referred to a foreclosure, turning to process foreclosure, and the balance on those is eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, so they're large dollar accounts that we have currently foreclosure in process. Then the remainder of that balance of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars is for two hundred and thirteen additional accounts, so they're roughly ten percent of the value of the ones that have gone to foreclosure. So in summary, we're here today to ask approval to do the write-off for the bad debt that we've had, we need to write off from a hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and three cents, and it relates to penalties and interest on some past due accounts receivable balances. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions? No? All right. What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, approval of the, the write-off. Comment that I truly appreciate Beavers' work in analyzing and assessing and taking the county's best interest going forward. Even if it is a write-off, it is done so in a very calculated and weighed, and thank you for being a good steward for the taxpayer dollar and for the properties in which are entrusted. Thank you, though you have.
Fantastic, all right, we have a motion, I'll be happy to second that. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Say none, all in favor?
No.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. All right, that brings us to our next item, which is Commissioner Plescher's item. I will turn it over to you, Commissioner Plescher.
The closing, Madam Chair.
Yeah, close us out.
Well, speaking of closures, I believe you've all got the memo, Mr. Stephen Hayes, who has performed a, a very beautiful function on the Tourist Development Council, he did begin as an owner-operator, as you recall, he was, he operated the airport operation out in your neck of the woods, and he worked with Joe as well. He was a fine asset, unfortunately, it has come time where he has chosen to make another endeavor and spend time with family. So he's tendered his resignation, he's not an owner-operator any longer, and we accept his resignation and in the process to continue, I did pull all applications. There was one from Nicole Johansson, which as you know, is very involved with North County operations, she also is the executive director of the Mel Fisher Museum, Randolph of Mel Fisher as well. So she's been very much involved with tourism. And then the other application is a Diana Bosell, which I have not had the opportunity to meet, but she submitted her application, she's not put any appointment on in any committee. So at this time, Madam Chair, I, I'd like to thank Stephen for his services and all the appropriate documentation is done, and I'd like the opportunity to appoint Nicole Johansson to the Tourist Development Council.
Fantastic, that is a motion by Commissioner Plescher with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. I think that I also echo my thanks to Steve, it was always fun to work with him.
Great guy.
Great guy, and Nicole has been a great advocate for, for North County and I think she would make a fantastic addition. Any other comments from Commissioners' questions?
I think she's a great choice.
All right, with that, there's a motion and a second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, that was, that was a great way to end the meeting. All right, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, please stand adjourned.